All right, it is five thirty. We will get this regular city council meeting started for February seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. First item on the agenda is to pledge allegiance to the flag if you'd all join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Look at that tan guy coming in.
I was gonna go sunburned. Uh, for those joining us, uh, at home and online, our city attorney just walked into the building. Um, our last meeting, you'll remember he was in Hawaii with palm trees blowing in the background as we were having forty below temperatures. So, welcome back.
Poor guy.
I wish I could say it's good to be back.
All right, uh, first take note that all members of the city council are present. Um, our first official action would be to approve the agenda with any additions or deletions. To the best of my knowledge, there are none, so the chair would entertain a motion to accept the agenda. We have a motion by councillor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by councillor Kraus. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five for the motion and zero against. Next, we will go to the approval of minutes from January eighteenth. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So move.
We have a motion by councillor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Holden. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. We'll go to payments and claims. Uh, we have monies going to the, uh, one oh one, I'm sorry, coming, yeah, going to the one oh one general fund in the amount of two hundred and eighty-three dollars and eight cents, coming from the eight twelve lodging tax fund. Accounts payable and claims, City of International Falls claims, we have four hundred seventy-one thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. Airport commission claims of three hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-two cents. Airport runway two claims of sixty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-two cents. And airport, uh, runway four claims of twenty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars for a total accounts or payable claims of eight hundred seventy-four thousand, eight hundred sixty-six dollars and nineteen cents. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution approving those transfers and claims.
So moved.
We have a motion by councillor Kraus. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by councillor Bowler. Any discussion or questions, concerns? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five for the motion, zero against. We'll go to audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring anything to the attention of the council? We also will have an opportunity later in the meeting if you'd like to bring something up then. We have, uh, down to the consent agenda, we have three items on the consent agenda, and just really quick, I was wondering if, uh, the city administrator could acknowledge why we have a resignation that is so old in our, uh, in our packet.
Mayor, council, yes, that was due to the fact that, uh, it was never acknowledged at the council level. And just for housekeeping and record keeping within our payroll system, within the HR system, um, I had asked previously if we could have those all, and the previous administrator as well had actually indicated that all of those, even just acknowledgement of their resignation should be on the city council for record purposes. And so, something had come up with this individual, and so we, I just asked that it be on here to have it in the record.
Right. So we have a consent agenda. Uh, the first item would be to approve travel, travel and training, uh, for public works employee. We have, uh, travel and training education for, uh, human resources safety director to the safety for HR professionals, August twenty-third through twenty-fourth in St. Paul. And the resignation of the on-call firefighter, uh, Josh Myers, as indicated by the city administrator. Chair would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by councillor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have two seconds, but I'm gonna take, uh, councillor Bowler this time. Call the question.
Aye.
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 I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to, uh, new business. We have the consideration of the purchase of four Panasonic Toughbook laptops in the amount of eleven thousand, six hundred and forty for the police department, uh, payable from a capital outlay. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that, uh, purchase.
So move.
We have a motion by councillor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by councillor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have a resolution, uh, for the cooperative construction agreement between the state, uh, Minnesota Department of Transportation and the City of International Falls for Trunk Highway fifty-three landscaping. Chair would entertain a motion for that, uh, contract.
So move.
We have a motion by councillor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Holden. Any discussion?
I just wanna say on this now, there's, there's numerous, lots of trees involved here, but it's, it's our discretion and we're at the discretion to put in what we wanna put in at, at different businesses depending upon where Ted finds out about, you know, what people want, kind of, and what's more feasible than what they're, because there's, there's
A lot of trees.
There's a lot of trees, and now going through a winter of still plowing, I'm sure after this, now Ted's gonna finally realize, gonna realize that there's some places maybe not so many, some places so many, we want them, but, I mean, it just, it's still at our discretion, it's not just a done deal that we're dealing with this, so just wanna point that out.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have, uh, uh, business development, uh, for public infrastructure program, uh, grant for Green Tech sewer alignment project. Uh, this goes through deed, this is the project to, uh, help facilitate the move for the sewer out there. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by councillor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by councillor Deech. Any discussion? Just a, a follow-up, one thing I hadn't noticed is we don't have a developers agreement is in here, is that something that comes in the future or uh, city attorney?
Well, there, there hasn't been one, uh, required as a, as a part of this, and we certainly, uh, uh, could do that, uh, if, uh, you know, with the resolution, if you wanted to make it contingent upon their entering into, uh, a, an acceptable development agreement with the city, uh, that would certainly be appropriate, but that's not something that's been done yet. Um, okay.
Mister Mayor, I think that this is just an application for the grant. I would assume that we would have a developers agreement in place before we let bids for the construction. Am I wrong on that?
Well, uh, I, I don't know, uh, what's been involved, uh, in the discussions with Green Tech, and, and I don't know, uh, i- in terms of, uh, is, uh, there some contingency? I know early on, there, there were some discussions about whether or not, uh, they would be putting some of their own monies, uh, into the project, uh, and some discussions took place, and, and under this proposal, uh, um, they're proposing that they would expand the building, and if they did, it would cost a certain amount of money, I, I guess. Uh, I've not been involved with any discussions with them in terms of typically in these development agreements, if they don't meet you know, you know, what their, uh, plans were to expand or create jobs, here the creation is for ten new jobs, uh, within, uh, five years. Uh, and, uh, a continuation of the current sixty jobs that they, I understand they currently have employed. Uh, and, um, that is something that we certainly can put together, uh, we've, uh, put together, uh, I've done a number of those with KETA over the years with various grants and things that have gone through KETA, uh, uh, to have certain requirements, and, and if they don't, uh, and sometimes, some of those have, have been tied to, uh, uh, tax abatement agreements, uh, and, uh, we're waiving taxes for a period of time, but if they don't reach those, then they run the risk of not getting the abatement that is promised, and, uh, I'd certainly be happy to, uh, engage, uh, uh, with Green Tech and, and with, uh, whoever from the city has been working with them, uh, to, uh, discuss this, uh, and I would, I guess I would encourage the city council to have, uh, such an agreement, uh, so that there is skin in the game, so to speak, uh, by the company, I mean, there, uh, they've got a great asset community, one of the larger employees in the community, uh, and I think it certainly, uh, uh, is appropriate, uh, uh, for the city to try to help them relocate the sewer so they can do these things, but if, uh, you know, to go to this expense and relocate the sewer and have them not do it, uh, you know, I would, I would think there should be some consequence for that, uh, because I, I presume that, uh, the reason the city would do this is, is to benefit, you know, ultimately, if they, if they do, uh, make the improvements, uh, there'll be increased taxes over the years, there'll be more jobs, and those will be beneficial. You know, on the other hand, uh, if, uh, this is done and nothing occurs, um, you know.
As, as I understand it, where my concern is, is, and I, I, I hope I'm relaying my understanding as the same understanding as the rest of the council and, uh, Green Tech. Green Tech wants to do the project. However, they didn't wanna put any money into the sewer project upfront. So we, as a EDA, are willing to expend all of the expenses to move the sewer line. And they are promising us that they are going to build or expand their bus, their business, and that's the give and take. So the city is putting the money up front, and by applying for this deed grant, we're saying that they are going to expand the business and build it. In the event that they make the choice that, you know, it ends up being too expensive and they can't do this work, then we, as I understand it, have to pay back the deed grant as well. So the monies that we're getting from the state to do this project, if the project doesn't move forward, we have to come up with more money to pay the difference because they didn't move forward with the project. So what I'd like to see happen is just have a developers agreement stating that they are going to do the project that they have, uh, presented to us, and in the event that they don't build in the time allotted by the, the deed grant, that they pay back the grant. I mean, the city's on the hook and we're willing to pay what we said we'd pay, but I wanna make sure that in the event that something changes, we don't have to then pay back the state of Minnesota for the other portion. So I think that's where my concerns are.
Well, we can certainly, uh, have a development agreement that sets forth those terms, uh, you know, assuming that's acceptable to Green Tech, and, and I have not personally been involved with any discussions with Green Tech, so I don't know what their position is, uh, but that's something that could, you know, and I don't necessarily think that it would, uh, I assume it's gonna take the state some time to act on this, uh, and if we're not able to come up with an acceptable signed development agreement, we could always notify the state, we're withdrawing, uh, our, uh, application and our agreement to, to front these funds.
Any other discussion?
What, what deadline do we have on this deep end? Is there a deadline? You know, Betty?
I don't know the deadline to get into for this application for this, this piece of it. I do not know. I would have to reach out to them and find out for sure.
Just so we can get in before the deadline, if everything goes the way we want to get the development agreement, then just.
Councillor Holden?
Yeah, I'd like to see Steve and, you know, I was involved in that, now, Betty, Betty and I were actually the original out there taking a tour of the plant and sitting down with the owners and stuff, and, uh, for whatever it takes to do it, to make it comfortable for everybody, um, I'm willing to s- take the time, if you're willing, and get something drawn up with them and sit down with them, I, I know the owner's pretty good, so, I mean.
Well, I've certainly, uh, got time available the next couple of days, I mean, something that, that I could, uh, you know, the three of us could, uh, set up a meeting and, and meet with them yet this week, and, and, uh, uh, you know, putting together an agreement once we have verbally agreed to the terms is, you know, a twenty-four hour turnaround. I mean, it's not gonna take us a long time to, to do the agreement once we agree upon the terms.
So, I'm gonna be in Arkansas goose hunting for a week, starting tomorrow. I head that way. And I won't be around in the next couple of days. So can we put an alternate from this EDA in there with you, Steve?
Oh, sure, doesn't matter who. I mean, just Betty and I could do it.
I, I think, I think just the city attorney would be able to handle it.
If, if you're comfortable with that.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, okay.
I think I'd want Betty, uh, involved as well, but the two of us could certainly do it, and, and, uh, you know, we probably could have a, once we talk with them, if we ha- have your phone number, we give you a call and just kind of bring you up to date on what's happening and get your input.
That'd be great.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
All right, well, it sounds like we're in, in agreement. The chair would entertain a motion to do an amendment to make sure that we have, uh, um, developers agreement in place before we move forward with um, passing the, the deed grant.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. We have a motion by councillor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by councillor Bowler. Any addition or any, uh, discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, I'll call a question on the amendment only.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. So then we have, uh, the motion on the table to approve the, um, deed agreement with a, uh, developers agreement in place. Any discussion now? Hearing none, I'll call the question on the motion.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Thank you, guys. Next, we'll go to the resolution approving the transfer of funds from the six oh three sanitary sewer to the Fund Four oh three sanitary super sewer capital outlay for lift station rehabilitation. Chair would entertain a motion, uh, for that transfer of funds.
I'll move.
We have a motion by councillor Bowler. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by councillor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have, uh, seems like every month, the, uh, joint powers, um, for the rec commission defining its powers, the, the nice thing about this is it's not extending it for a month, it's extending it for a while. So, um, chair would entertain a motion to approve those jo- joint power agreements.
So moved.
We have a motion from councillor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by councillor Holden. Any discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to, um, a resolution approving, uh, application for a one to four day temporary on sale liquor license for the Rotary Club for the men's hockey tournament, March eighteenth through twentieth. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt that resolution.
So move.
We have a motion by councillor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by councillor Holden. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to the reports of the administrator, the attorney, department heads. Start with the city administrator.
Uh, Mayor, I have nothing specific to add this evening, thank you.
City attorney?
Yeah, Mister Mayor and council, although I was, uh, in a very warm environment, uh, a lot of, lot happening, uh, uh, work now, uh, with Zoom, uh, one of the advantages of that, uh, uh, typically, uh, most of the hearings we have and, and the, uh, criminal cases typically have been done by Zoom. Uh, so I was able to do several of those while I was in Hawaii, uh, one day had forty-two cases, another day had thirty-two. Uh, and also, uh, participated, uh, in, uh, some of the, uh, union negotiations, at least with the team, I, I wasn't involved uh, by Zoom or on the phone when meeting, uh, with the, uh, union representatives, uh, uh, but didn't remember that, so, uh, in the past, uh, didn't go last year because of COVID, but have been taking this January vacation for many years. The county attorney always had the cover for me and handled my cases where I was gone, so, uh, this year, that didn't need to happen, I was able to just proceed, uh, as normal. And, uh, worked out, uh, worked out very well, uh, and, um, it, uh, you know, we're, we're progressing, I, I've gotten preliminary indication, uh, that it looks like our efforts, uh, to, uh, have the international building code accepted as that we've found a way to, um, reference that in our complaints, uh, so I'm, I'm anticipating that uh, within the next couple of weeks, we're gonna have the go-ahead to, uh, start all of the, uh, additional criminal actions on those, uh, properties that are violating the code since it was adopted, uh, uh, and revised, uh, here last, it was last May that we did that, and, and, uh, and what we've been doing up until now is just processing the ones that were already in the system. We haven't been able to initiate any new ones because they're under the new ordinance, not the old ordinance, yeah, but it looks like that's finally, uh, being approved, uh, and we've got about thirty properties, uh, where, uh, fire marshal is recommending moving ahead on those, and, and I'm in agreement on those, so, uh, we've cleaned up most of the old ones, but it looks like we'll have a whole bunch of new ones shortly. That's all I have.
Uh, department heads, anything to bring forward? Okay, well, uh, in your packet, you guys had a copy of the fire rescue EMS report. Uh, we'll go to the reports of the mayor, council committees, boards and commissions. Anybody have anything to bring forward?
Well, we had, yeah, on the rec commission, we had officers, uh, voted on. So we have Tony Palm as chairman of the rec commission, and Mark Loewak, vice chairman. Dr. Reiners, I believe that's how you pronounce his last name, he's secretary. And so we're back in, um, with our new officers, uh, moving forward and things are going good, so.
Fantastic.
Please. Um, we had a discussion at the, uh, Public Works over the incident that has taken place at Cary Park with the, uh, freeze-up and different things, so that'll be brought up at the, uh, call meeting coming up, but you can hear that report so you can plan that there. Yeah. We'll have a better report than, uh, the time.
Okay, appreciate that.
And, um, we had the housing meeting last Monday, and, uh, they had, uh, we had the minutes for, or the, uh, the agenda for the Minnesota housing meeting, um, that the AB project was to be approved, and then, of course, I think the, the Gazette broke the story that, uh, the AB project has been approved, so those apartments will be completed, I think they're gonna start construction this June, so we've been working pretty hard on that through the, uh, uh, Ching Housing Collaborative. So I sit on that committee along with Administrator Bergstrom, so that was pretty good news. We knew, we, it wasn't official at our meeting, but we knew that it was gonna be official later in the week, and then it did in fact get approved, so.
Just out of curiosity, is everything that's part of that project zoned correctly from just being the school to being into housing, and I'm just kinda?
I can't comment on that. I don't honestly know. That's all I know is that it, the, um, I wanna say it was twelve million dollars. It was approved, I don't, don't quote me on that, but.
It was twelve and a half.
Twelve and a half.
Million, I think.
Yeah, it'd been approved, so we'll know more at the housing meeting now in February.
Okay. All right, anything else? Um, the, one thing that, uh, came up at the airport meeting, and actually, we'll go back even a little bit before that, it came up in Public Works, and it's been kind of working its around, way around. Uh, there, long story short, the city has, uh, is interested in having the airport in the city limits of International Falls, it was officially brought up at the last airport commission meeting. Um, it was, uh, I don't know i- if it was well received, um, lots more questions were asked than, uh, I guess I kind of expected, just having the airport, which is in the city, owned by the city, we're hoping it could be in the City of International Falls, and, uh, there's more conversation, it has been officially asked, it'll be on the agenda next month to, um, have official board action taken on whether they will give a recommendation to the county to bring it in. This is spurred by a potential, uh, development that wants to build some housing, but they wanna build the housing in the International Falls. We can't get them into the City of International Falls unless the airport is in. There's a handful of reasons why it makes sense that the city or the airport would be in the city limits of International Falls, half of it already is. A hundred percent of it is in Koochin County, half of it's in the City of International Falls, we would like to all be to be in International Falls. We have a, um, we have a policy that if we run water to a facility, it would be in the city limits of International Falls, we do run water to the airport, but yet that portion isn't in, uh, in the city, so, um, big picture, we're looking to try to get the airport in the city, um, longer term, which would be a bigger conversation and getting more people involved. If we can get, uh, this into the city, then we can start working to move possibly on a housing project that could come into the city. However, if we can't get one, the other one's not gonna happen, so, um, that's why that conversation has happened. Um, secondly, I did go to the League of Minnesota Cities Conference this last weekend in Plymouth. Um, there's a lot of cities that are in the same boat as us. Everyone's working on projects, everyone's trying to get money. Um, I heard from the legislative update that they are optimistic that there will be a bonding bill this year, and with having a seven billion dollar surplus, they do believe that, uh, some form of everybody's projects are gonna get funded this year. Um, or nobody's is, they won't have a bonding project at all, but, uh, they are very optimistic that, uh, um, we will get some form of our bonding in place. With that being said, uh, this last week, Representatives, uh, Representative Eklund and Representative Sundine, uh, submitted our bill for the, uh, House of Representatives. And Senator Bach, um, with the co-signer, submitted our, uh, bond for the Senate. We are cautiously optimistic that, uh, we'll be able to move forward. With the Cary Park project, uh, I've been contacted a lot by outside entities of, uh, of the city wondering where the ISG, um, study is, and I can tell you that, uh, they have gave a presentation, um, for myself and Betty and, uh, and Ted Brokaw, we will be getting that to the city council, they were, um, cautiously optimistic that they'd be able to give it at the committee of the whole meeting next, uh, Monday. However, uh, I think the direction that we're gonna go in is they have worked with, uh, guestimates of revenues that we're gonna have, so now they are going to go to the outside entities like Rec Hockey and the people that would utilize the facility and have discussions on, um, you know, what they pay, what, you know, just so that the numbers are right. What's key for us in this whole process is to understand what the costs are so that we can present an educated understanding to the public. We don't wanna do this half-assed, this is important to us. It's very important to our residents that we get this right, and getting it right may be that we move forward, and it may be that we don't. But we wanna make sure that we have quality, educated information to share when we, when we share it to both the city council and to the public. So, uh, that's exciting, um, and I think that's all I had. I wrote one more note, but I don't know what I wrote, so. Um, that is everything that I have going on. So, we'll go to audience, if there's anyone in the audience that has anything to? So we'll go to audience. If there's anyone in the audience that has anything to bring forward? Please.
I think it's, I think it was the article about economic development in the area. And from that, which I did not understand, I believe there is a private company that wants to work with the city to develop a storage and transportation business.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, so, so the question was about, uh, the article in the Rainy Lake Gazette about, uh, a potential development in the multimodal site. Uh, myself, Counselor, uh, Holden, uh, Commissioner Hanson, Commissioner Rasmussen, a lot of the members of, of the KETA board sat through a presentation with, uh, with, uh, group from the metro area who have worked in other, uh, areas to try to bring in train service, uh, for logistics, the, uh, breaking trains, uh, storage of, of materials. And, uh, they gave a presentation. They would like to build in the city's multimodal site. Um, there is additional conversation that will have to happen moving forward. Um, I don't think that we're at a point where we would say that the city is on board. I, would you agree? I mean, we, it was a, it was a long conversation.
It was a long conversation and we got more to talk about, so, but, uh, it's possible.
The, the, the thing of it is, is they have worked in with, uh, the Port of Duluth to do some work. They've worked in Minneapolis, uh, and their company is based out, out of the metro area. They see International Falls as being, uh, a transportation hub because of, uh, our closeness with, uh, Canada and because nothing has really changed in railroad since the nineteen fifties. There's no big new ports or anything like that. So being able to break trains in International Falls and house, um, house trailers and be able to do all of that and make product in, in the multimodal area where you don't have to pay taxes until it leaves the facility, all makes sense. The, the fifteen million dollar question is the fifteen million dollars. How do we do it? I mean, there, they have connections. Um, the city has property, but we don't have funding to put into a project like that. Um, I think it was a really good first, uh, first conversation. I think we have a long way to go. Um, we, uh, MDNW was also in that meeting, um, the big player that needed to be in that meeting that was not was CN. Uh, CN is the one that brings all the trains through this area. So with that being said, we definitely need to have some conversations with them to see if, if they're willing and able to join into that. But I think it, it was a good first conversation and, um, by no means is this a guarantee, but I think that this is a starting point for possibly a future project.
And this is essentially the development of a rail roundhouse for use by trains.
Correct. Yep.
But then they have something about the development of products to ship out.
Yep.
Is that manufacturing that?
Mm-hmm.
Come to town and you would develop and what kind of manufacturing?
So that, that's the interesting thing of what they're bringing to the table because, uh, the multimodal area is in a tax-free zone. You can bring into that area products from all over the world and you don't have to pay taxes on them until they leave. So you could bring into International Falls three hundred different components. People could put those components together on site, break a train, put them on, together on site and then sell them right from that facility. And that would be the first time you'd have to pay taxes on that, that gizmo or whatever it is you're selling. So they also had brought up the idea of being able to be a distribution center. So we could, uh, house product for areas like Amazon or whatever, and we could ship directly from here for the, the area, maybe as far south as Duluth or whatever. So there was, there was a lot of stuff that they had on there. They also had, uh, digital information technology that they were looking at. And like I said, I think, I always think all of the guys that are elect, guys and gals that are elected, we all mean well, but we don't understand all the stuff that gets thrown at us. So with that being said, now it's on us to start doing some research and try to get a better understanding of what they're proposing, what we, what our role is and if it makes sense for us to move forward with it. But they did have a really large package that they wanted us to take a look at.
I, I think we were in conversation for a couple hours, so, um, in the meeting. It was a special meeting.
Find these companies to bring in these products and assemble those product? What do they do for their money?
Well, we get, like I say, we got more talking to do. There's, I mean, there's a good possibility it could go through because the city owns land and stuff, uh, that we could give them. But as far as like what Harley's saying, the fifteen million, probably not. But they're willing to look for investors to invest into it. That's one of their ideas. And until this all comes together, I mean, there's a lot, lot there. There was a lot, like Harley was saying, there was a lot to take into the brain for two hours. Um, it was a good first meeting. Yeah.
Thank you for bringing that up. That was complete, that might've been what that was.
Probably was.
Anything else, uh, under audience? All right, uh, we have some correspondence from, uh, um, International Falls Rainier, Rainy Lake Con, uh, convention and ve- visitors bureau meeting, uh, rec commission meeting and the airport, uh, commission meeting. Our next meeting will be, um, on Tuesday, February twenty-second in observation of President's Day on the twenty-first. With that being said, if we have nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.